Good evening, everybody. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember von Rudenberg here. Deputy Mayor Canastino here. Deputy Mayor Sims here. Councilmember Pataglia here. Mayor LaBrusse here. This meeting is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10:4-6, that SEC notice having been published according to law with a copy on file in the City Clerk's office and a copy posted on the Bulls and Board in City Hall.
Thank you very much. Everybody, please rise for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands its stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. And with that, we're going to go right into the City Manager's report.
Okay. First on the agenda tonight is a presentation from suburban engineering from Elenny, and I'll murder her last name, so she's going to have to present that when she gets up to the microphone. This is in reference to sewer separation, the finances, and flooding. Elenny, please. Please say your name for the record.
Thank you, Ted. My name is Elenny Genikopoulos. I'm an engineer working for Suburban Consulting Engineers. Today is the -- the objective of this presentation is to introduce to you -- well, not introduce to you, go in a little bit more detail what ordinances 38-2019 and 39-2019 are about as you are adopting these ordinances in today's meeting. Quickly, just to go over the presentation outline, brief introduction on where we are and why we're here in really -- as it relates to combined sewer systems and combined sewer overflows, our regulatory compliance obligations, the City of Hackensack issues and concerns, city's commitment to long-term solutions, financing ultimately, and some questions and answers. I want to pass it over to Jim, your Chief Financial Officer, to revisit some of his slides that he had presented to you in March and kind of segues into the conversation topic of today's presentation.
Thanks. Yeah, it was about six months ago during the budget presentation where one of the things that we had talked about, and in fact, we've talked about this at every budget presentation, is quality of life. Quality of life is what government is supposed to do. You know, we pool resources, which are taxes, and we provide services that people can't do for themselves. The quality of life issue up to this point that we've been working on has really been tax stabilization, but there's other issues as well. The combined sewers, which Elenny will be talking about more, are a problem, and flooding is a major problem that definitely impacts the quality of life. And what we said that we were going to be doing now is that we were going to be improving or increasing services without increasing taxes. So when we get into the financing, you'll see how we plan to pull that off, okay? Now, if you remember during the budget presentation, I had said this was basically our budget goal, all right? As we improve our infrastructure, okay, we'll continue to attract redevelopment. As redevelopment comes in, that's going to provide us with the revenue, that's going to give us the tax relief that'll allow us to continue to improve the infrastructure, and so on. And all of these then -- there we go. All of these impact the quality of life we talked about. Now, roughly around the same time as the budget presentation, we also did our goal-setting session, you know, and I had said at that point that one of the goals of the finance department, you'll see the third one on there, is to adopt a long-term financial plan to address the flooding issues that occur here in Hackensack. And that's a very complicated process, and that's why we needed to do it this way. There's two bond ordinances that are on for adoption tonight at the business meeting, and just note that in the next six months, there will be several more as we talk about combined sewers and flooding. Next month, first meeting in October probably, we'll be doing the bond ordinance for the separation of the Main Street sewers, okay? But now what we're going to do is we're going to go into an overview of combined sewers, flooding, and what we plan to do about it.
Thank you, Jim. For the record, my time starts now. Just a brief introduction into the public that's here. The City of Hackensack has all of the information that you need on the website. This is a direct quote from what we have, what the city is posting for everybody to see what the definition of combined sewers is, and it's really the remnants of the country's early infrastructure. And it's pretty much stormwater runoff and sanitary sewer in the same pipe. During dry weather, these combined sewer systems, also known as CSO, transport wastewater directly to the sewage treatment plant or to our regulator facilities. So for those that do have a question of why are we spending all of this money, all of this information is readily available, and the public participation has been quite active for the city. As far as having a visual of what this combined sewer system is, in normal weather events, we have all the catch basins pretty much discharging all the stormwater runoff in the same sewer infrastructure as your sanitary sewer. As it reaches the regulator facility or the screening facility, it pretty much regulates what goes to the treatment plant at BCUA and what is then ultimately overflowing into the river. Extreme weather events where there's more water than the capacity of the sewers can sustain, more often than not, combined sewer does overflow into the river. And that is pretty much not -- it's going back to the definition, CSOs are among the major sources responsible for beach closings, shell fishing restrictions, and other water body impairments. So it's not to be taken lightly. The City of Hackensack has two screening facilities, as you very well know. Anderson is treating the north side of the city, and Court Street is treating the south side of the city, treating -- functioning as a regulating facility. And the quantity of raw sewage that is actually going to BCUA is contracted to a certain amount. So once that amount is actually -- that's why it's called a regulator -- once that amount is reached, it pretty much shuts off the valves and everything ultimately overflows into the river. The total occurrences of overflows that the City of Hackensack is facing today averages about six per month. We've had, duly noting, it's been very wet. The past couple of years, we've had a lot more rainfall than years past, but right now, we're averaging about over 70 overflows a year. The goal that is set from the DEP and through all our CSO permit efforts, we need to bring that down to four a year. So in understanding the magnitude of what is before us, it's not -- it's a very sizable effort. The overview of the City of Hackensack sewer system ultimately is defined in this map with yellow depicting what is treated by the Anderson screening facility, and let me try to find the laser, if it works. There it is. So the yellow part, northern part of the city, is treated by Anderson. The lower part, including this section here, is ultimately going to the Court Street discharge So in the big picture of the state of New Jersey, you're not alone. You are one of 21 municipalities that is functioning with a combined sewer system issue. Bayonne, Camden, East Newark, Elizabeth Fortley, I mean, they're all listed there for you. So you're not alone. All this information is listed at NJFuture.org for those that are interested in taking a look at what's available online. And then here we come to regulatory compliance. So we have a combined sewer. You live here, you know exactly what your problem areas are, but there is a bigger element that we have to address, and that's regulatory compliance and obligations. Primarily, the New Jersey Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, that is the acronym that Najibides is what it's being referenced as, and your CSO permit. That includes monthly reports. System characterization report was due in July of 2018. It's listed for everybody to see. It's public information for not just the City of Hackensack, but all the 21 municipalities. Submission of the seven alternatives you were presented with that from your consultant, Arcadis, in the June meeting, going over their seven alternatives for your long-term control plan. And ultimately, the penultimate goal is the long-term control plan to be completed by June 1 of 2020, which is in less than a year. And the monthly meetings continue. There's a lot of costs associated with maintaining compliance for what is regulatory obligations. There's years of study. Long-term control plan in itself is not something that is just furnished to you. It's been an ongoing effort from your consultants. Mitigation flooding of the combined sewer overflows, reduce overflow discharge to four annually, and public participation. All of these reports, the city stands in compliance with their CSO permit requirements, but all of these documents cost you a lot of money. And it's just spending, spending, spending. So the long-term control plan, ultimate goals, is to reduce and eliminate CSO discharges, provide the alternatives analysis for green infrastructure. I want to take a little segue here. Green infrastructure is considered the infrastructure that treats stormwater on-site. So it's bioswales, it's rain gardens, it's actually very aesthetically pleasing if the planning boards start to adopt ordinances that encourage redevelopment to take effect of green infrastructure. And the state is very, very -- a huge proponent on green infrastructure. The reason I say that is when we go into the financing, you'll see how much the state believes in that infrastructure. And again, you treat it on-site, you're not transposing that flow to go back to the river. That is a huge credit for the treatment of stormwater. Sewer separation, infiltration and flow, treatment of CSO discharge and storage. Ultimately, we need to develop a plan and implementation schedule that we need to abide by, and that is where we're at and approaching. So the City of Hackensack's optimal goal is sewer separation, and again, going from 70 annually to four per year. And per the presentation that Arcade has presented to you in their June meeting, their estimate is over half a billion dollars. That is not a light number. The City of Hackensack's objectives outside of the regulatory compliance is combined sewer systems and CSO, and that comes first because that is a regulatory obligation that we need to address, and it's something that we have to face. Your objective to bring in redevelopment, to Jim's point, we need to facilitate adequate storm and sanitary sewer capacity to support redevelopment. Connecting to an existing system that does not have adequate capacity is something that we need to avoid at all costs. And then the non-CSO area flooding. I showed you the map earlier with the northern section that's colored in yellow and the bottom in green. What about all the surrounding areas that are already separated but are dealing with a lot of flooding? So we need to -- which is a consequence of the inadequate stormwater capacity in place. So the goal is to improve the quality of life for the Hackensack residents. It resonates through all of these objectives. The city's commitment to the long-term solutions, however, $555 million is a mountain of obligations, and where do you begin? Your current administration is looking to find progress in a phased approach, offer interim solutions, and proceed in smart, affordable steps. So obviously, the combined sewer system and CSO overflow issue, as I mentioned before, we need to increase the storage capacity and mitigate flooding by constructing new stormwater conveyance infrastructure in select areas. As far as redevelopment is concerned, we need to focus, and our problem statement is to facilitate storm and sanitary sewer capacity to support redevelopment. Main Street redevelopment, that is the primary concern, and the City of Hackensack's obligation to implement sewer separation by adding stormwater infrastructure to discharge directly to the river, and then sanitary flows to be directed right to the regulator. Again, let's see some progress in a phased approach. Do we need to separate the entire city in one day? No. In one year? No. It's a 20-year commitment. We need to start somewhere. So the ordinance that's coming in next month will be for combined sewer separation, stormwater separation, for Atlantic Avenue to Berry Street, taking it all to the river. The other redevelopment issue that is in the forefront right now is to, again, facilitate stormwater capacity to support redevelopment for the hospital. It is a great taxpayer for the city. We want to see them stay in the city. There's no questions asked. They're doing their efforts to separate sewers for their own redevelopment concerns. The city is obligated to see where that separation is going to go. Having it go back to a combined sewer system is not the optimal solution for what happens downstream from the hospital. Again, we need to take a step, one step at a time. Let's see a phased approach solution and offering that solution in a smart and affordable step. So that is what you are adopting today. It is for $14.6 million, and that is for the combined sewer separation for James Street, Clay Street, and Court Street areas. So the way we're wording these ordinances are by design ambiguous enough where they're not going to specific -- into specifics of what we're planning on doing. We are separating sewers. Any new infrastructure that is receiving stormwater is indeed separating the sewers, but we are aware and we are hearing your voices that James Street is an area of concern. Clay Street is an area of concern. We're lumping it into the same ordinance so that we can tackle them under one loan application. So non-CSO area flooding is another concern. I mean, we are focusing on the combined sewers, and we are obligated to address them, but what about the rest of the city and the rest of the residents that are inundated with flooding? And it's a consequence of inadequate capacity issues. The fire department, I believe, or police department, the fire department provided these pictures of what you are dealing with on an extreme weather event. So these are Hudson Street, South Newman, and Hudson, and I guess it's Westaki. So the problem statement is inadequate capacity. Again, let's see a phased approach. So let's add some capacity to those areas by adding stormwater infrastructure to have that much more storage in the pipe. We may have to reconnect to existing manholes, but in that area, all that water that you saw in the previous pictures will be actually stored in sewer infrastructure, stormwater infrastructure in those roads. Is it going to go to an existing manhole further downstream where the problem is alleviated? Yes, for the time being, it will, but ultimately, that is one step of the puzzle that ultimately will continue on and phase out to completion. So that's the second ordinance that you're adopting today, and that is for $1.5 million. And we are focusing specifically on Pine, South Newman, South River, and Hudson Streets, Polyfly Park area, and Temple Avenue. Those are the areas of concern that we were asked to even focus on and study in our initial investigation of these areas when we started working for you, and these are the areas we're actually pursuing and implementing in this ordinance. So now I'm switching this over to financing, and this is really the essence of my conversation with you, and I'm going to switch this over to a TED Talk, and that is a technology, entertainment, design discussion. It's industry-standard terminology. I'm not giving props to TED, but it's going to be brief, to the point, and have a lot of ground to cover, so just stay with me. We have the traditional bond anticipation notes. This is Jim language for Chief Financial Officer. That's what you're up against when you're looking to take out a loan for a short-term period. The reason why it is a -- it's a great answer for an interim solution. Local governing unit, such as the City of Hackensack, finances project costs. The pros are that you have available finance. It's an available financing mechanism. The local governing unit does not have to use capital funds, so if something comes up and your debt capacity allows, you can go through a bond ordinance, appropriate the funds, and then proceed with a bond anticipation note. However, the cons on that is that it's a short Band-Aid to what is a bigger fix. The entire project costs are subject to interest. Now, I know that bands, bond anticipation notes are also acronymed as ban. Bands are now going for -- bond sales are going for 2%. This is a great time to finance, but you are looking at a 10-year payback period with very aggressive debt service payments. So the interest rates are subject to also your credit rating. So depending on how good your predecessors had acted on behalf of the city, your credit rating may or may not qualify for the best rates available. And the financing period, again, is short-term. Anything that would be a long-term, you definitely need to have a lot more costs that would actually give you the benefit of going into the long-term financing. So here is why we're here right now. There's a federal government, and they appropriate billions every year for clean water infrastructure. And here's the EPA who funnels that money from the state -- from the federal government to a more specific focus, which is environmental infrastructure. And the EPA appropriates money for each state, including Puerto Rico, through the Clean Water State Revolving Fund. Now, that acronym is also known as the CWSRF. We're going to be using it a lot. Clean water, as opposed to drinking water, is the water that needs to be cleaned and treated. So clean water, even though it sounds like it's clean, it's really not. So the CWSRF pretty much gives the money from the federal government to infrastructure banks, and again, 51 state-level infrastructure banks that makes loans for water quality projects. And that's how it works. It goes from the federal government through the EPA. It's the Clean State Revolving Fund that goes into the state of New Jersey, for our case, and the loans are given out for all of these projects, and the debt service payments go back and revolve in that fund. So essentially, the funds should be there indefinitely, depending on the financing program. They are very aggressive in trying to market this program in the state of New Jersey, and they've been very successful on the drinking water side where they actually ran out of money. They were giving away money with no interest, so the debt service payments were not coming back right away. However, for the clean water, there's still a lot of money available. So how did it get started? The Clean Water Act Amendment, and I'm saying this to validate that this is real money and this money is available to you, has been available to you since 1987, and has been refined in how to be utilized by each state in 2014. So for the state of New Jersey, the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, NJDEP, in conjunction with the Infrastructure Bank, NJIB, they are the mechanisms of giving the money away as the loan applications come in. So the eligible projects for water quality improvement is wastewater infrastructure, stormwater management, site remediation, equipment purchases, planning. The list is ongoing, and this is not a sales pitch per se, but this is what everybody in the state of New Jersey is seeking financing through this fund, not just sewer separation efforts. These are just some case studies of cities throughout the state of New Jersey that have taken advantage of this loan. So for the wastewater infrastructure eligible projects are any of the above. Infiltration and inflow, which is our primary focus, is also included, and I highlighted in red. And sewer system rehabilitation, as well as new collection systems. New infrastructure is a new collection system. So all of these qualify. As far as stormwater management is concerned, when we're not talking about sewer separation, eligible projects are stormwater runoff controls. Treatment systems, stormwater detention and conveyance, which is what we're looking to do for the non-CSO areas, and green infrastructure. And again, green infrastructure is porous pavement, think a little bit outside of the box, rain gardens, bioswales, et cetera. They look like that. So the funding packages, and this is where I need you to stay with me. The CSO for green infrastructure, they're giving away $3 million for free if you are putting out a project that is doing exactly that, green infrastructure. So undeveloped areas that you would consider to do something like that, that would be a bonus. Now, in our city limits, there's not too many areas that we could actually take advantage of that, but it is up -- it's up for debate. Base funding, so absent of what we talked about with the bond anticipation notes, 100% of the project costs are financed with an interest rate. All of the projects, so your worst-case scenario for this funding program, 50% of your project costs, total project costs, which include planning, design, bond counsel fees, attorney fees, administrative fees, including construction costs as well as engineering during construction, are all covered at 50% of that at no interest. The other 50%, it's a AAA market rate with your grandfathered, the New Jersey Infrastructure Bank's credit rating, which is fantastic. And if you're a non-self-liquidating utility for whatever reason, you are also eligible for this financing, which if you're in the finance, you understand that that is a huge plus, which is not our case, thank God. And the payback period for these loans are essentially 30 years. You are definitely having the time to pay this back to match the anticipated useful life of what you're putting into your system. And the CSO abatement is for a maximum of $1 million principal forgiveness. So the best way to maximize your potential for that is that you have at a minimum a $2 million project. 50% of that, which would be a million, would be free, free money. 25% of that would be at no interest, and 25% remaining will be a AAA market rate. So the cost to nexus of $10 million will receive base funding, straight base funding, that is the fine print. $1 million principal forgiveness is limited to one per year per applicant. And the fine -- the fine print goes on and on. But this is why we're here, because of the fine print, and this is what other advisors overlook. For CSO abatement projects, cost to nexus of $10 million, you receive base funding. Okay, so that's our worst-case scenario. Our worst-case scenario still saves you millions of dollars in debt service payments because it's at no interest. The $1 million principal forgiveness, fine print, many are misinterpreting that regulation that it's $1 million per applicant ever. The fine print tells you, and if it doesn't say it in the fine print, you can call and find out, it's $1 million of free money per applicant, so per the City of Hackensack, per fiscal year, per project. So if we had our ducks in a row, we could have gotten $1 million every year. The applicant receives principal forgiveness at closing of the long-term financing, which is when construction is completed. So if you're spending $2 million out of a $6 million project and you expect to receive the principal forgiveness, the state wants you to hold you accountable. You need to finish that $6 million in order for you to receive that million for free. And the principal forgiveness is subject to availability of funds in the program. So it's not a bottomless, you know, bucket of gold at the end of the rainbow. There is only so much money that they're giving out for this. So back to the good news where you're not alone, and there's 21 municipalities that have combined sewer systems. The bad news is, is that all of you, all of us, are looking for this funding mechanism. So what's highlighted in yellow here are cities that have already taken advantage of the principal forgiveness, one of which is Hackensack under Jim's tenure. 2014, we did. We received $1 million for free towards Phase 1 of Main Street project. However, all the rest of these cities have projects in the queue like we do, and there's only $6 million left for principal forgiveness. So we need to proceed. Time is of the essence. Short-term construction loans for planning and design, soft costs and construction costs. I'm highlighting them in red because this is what we can take money out for replenishing costs that you have already spent. And ultimately, the fine print, again, planning and design costs, provide invoices, so we need to show that we have paid these professionals to do this, but we can go back three to five years. So your long-term control plan, years of study, we need to go through the books with Jim, but we can put those invoices to the state and reimburse yourselves of those costs and those expenses at 0% interest. That is a huge milestone in replenishing your capital funds for money that you have already spent, even if the shovel didn't hit the ground yet, because the state acknowledges that for sewer separation, those planning efforts date back to as far as 10 years. However, they are limiting it to anywhere from three to five, provided that the invoices we provide to them are exactly that. Their planning efforts for the long-term control plan, their planning efforts for anything pertaining to the project scope. So that is one of the huge breakthroughs that we're doing through this ordinance, and the reason why it's $14.6 million for Court Street. That is a dart on the wall because we want to start somewhere, and that $14 million would facilitate an interim financing mechanism so that Jim can reimburse the City of Hackensack all the money that has been spent to date associated with the sewer separation planning And then construction completion. We need to complete projects. So if we are starting this bond ordinance for Court Street, for Main Street, for the non-CSO areas, we need to have the projects completed in order for us to secure the finding -- the funding mechanism that is available. So time is of the essence. So ordinance number 38-2019, the project description is really, again, financing of the stormwater infrastructure improvements for South Newman, Polyfly Park, Temple Avenue, Pine Street, South River, and Hudson Street. And the estimated costs that you're approving tonight is $1.5 million. And the estimated cost that you're approving tonight is $1.5 million. Again, let's see progress in a phased approach. Ordinance 39-2019, you are approving the sewer separation in the vicinity of James Street, Clay Street, and Court Street. Again, by design, the bond ordinance is ambiguous enough so that we can throw in as much as possible under those areas of what needs to be done. For the New Jersey Environmental Infrastructure Funding Program, we have a loan application in place, and that description is even broader. And this is, just to put your minds at ease, that we are saying, in the loan application to the state, that the city is seeking financial assistance for the preparation, creation, and implementation of the long-term control plan, system characterization reports, all of the regulatory requirements for your CSO permit can be thrown in there and recoup all of those funds. So, the estimated cost, though, we're recommending for this is $14.6 million. I do want to state and be very clear that the efforts to bring the flow from the hospital to the Court Street regulator will far exceed $14 million. So, I meet with Jim every two weeks, as well as your project management team, and we go over your debt capacity. We're being smart in the steps that we're taking and making these projects work. So, while we're getting and we're hitting pedal to the metal on the design efforts to see how we're going to make this happen, we want to have a dollar amount that is significant enough for the state to understand that the city is taking a huge investment in this effort, as well as giving us enough wiggle room to reimburse you for costs already borne to date, and allowing any other planning efforts and geotechnical, anything that has to take place in order for us to say, yes, X marks the spot, this is where the stormwater infrastructure is going to go. And, again, these costs are preliminary. Once we go out to bid and we have probable cost estimates, we will amend the ordinance to be more realistic of what we're up against. Jersey City has taken a $5 million project. Jersey City Municipal Utilities Authority, these are case studies of how many have taken advantage of this program. City of Newark, $12 million. City of Elizabeth, $5 million per Thamboy, $350,000, and that is all in the last six months. That's being advertised on their Facebook page. The city of Hoboken, Jersey City, they have reaped the benefits of this program for all this time. And, again, final thoughts for us is the city of Hackensack objectives, sewer separation, redevelopment, and non-CSO flooding areas. Projects awarded to date from the I-Bank show that the program works. I, myself, have helped municipalities go through over a dozen loan programs through the state for this type of financing. We have to take advantage of the available funding that's there and act fast, and, again, time is of the essence. So, let's not look at the mountain, let's just take it one step at a time with your support. Phased approach, offering interim solutions, and proceeding in smart, affordable steps. And that's it.
Thank you, Alani.
You're welcome. Any questions?
I'm going to defer Deputy Mayor Canastrino, because I know she has questions.
Well, I'm sure you know what my questions are, because I don't agree with this approach. Our approach was always to start from the river and work our way west. And the plan was always to do that in a way that it makes sense, because the stormwater is directing itself towards the river. So, if we don't accomplish that in a meaningful way, jumping into the middle of the city really doesn't make very much sense. So, to me, the first thing we should be looking at funding is what was always on the plate, was a three-phased approach to finish the Main Street separation. River Street is separated, most of Moore, if not all of Moore, is separated. Phase 1 incorporated the northern side of Main Street. So, we have now an opportunity where there's tons of construction going on on Main Street. So, it would be beneficial for us to be doing the work there, and also, again, the connectivity directly to the river. Why did we not choose that as our number-one project? That's not even included here.
It is included. We have it on H2 loans. The application has been started, absolutely. The ordinance was not prepared at the time when we were looking at...
Talking about Clay Street, Jim mentioned we're not even going to be talking about from Atlantic to Besseck Street, or to Westbury, or Camden, wherever it stops, until October. That should have been, that should be, in my opinion, our number-one priority, because it was something that was scheduled to be done, should have been completed already. So, we're already behind the eight ball with that. And if we fund this tonight, I want someone's assurance that the focus will still be where it should be, which is from the river, working its way west. Getting the Main Street work done so that we have clear visibility and clear throughput of our stormwater from there, directly to the river, while we continue to analyze where it's going to go. Understanding, yes, our relationship with the medical center was such that we were able to negotiate with them, that while you're doing all this work, we convince them to separate their sewer and lay their pipe, understanding that that's, we're not ready to meet that yet, but at least that's on their dime. So, all of the pipe that's being laid, all of the connectivity, they're willing to pay for that. So, understanding that's happening aside from city funding, and that has to be accomplished. And, yes, we have to explore how we're eventually going to connect that and what's going to go on at Clay Street, as you mentioned, which is a much more expensive and much bigger proposition than the $14 million that we're presenting here. But, the rest of it, the entire Main Street portion of it can get done, so we can proceed with the rest of the work that has to happen on Main Street. And I firmly believe that that has to be done first.
Yeah, I can address that quickly. What we're doing is, tonight, we're funding the Court Street drainage area. Now, as I said, in October, first meeting in October, we'll be introducing the bond ordinance for the Main Street sewer separation. The reason we're doing it in that backwards order is because, as Alani mentioned, the principal forgiveness portion is limited to $1 million per applicant, per project, per fiscal year. Main Street wasn't ready. The application deadline for this year was July 1st. The Main Street project wasn't ready. The Court Street project was ready. Okay, so what we did was...
Main Street project should have been ready, Jim. That's the problem.
Okay, but it wasn't. Okay, so the reality is, is that what we needed to do is maximize that principal forgiveness. So, we funded the Court Street drainage area first. We're still going ahead with Main Street. That'll be next year. The progress of, next month, I'm sorry. Okay.
Better not...
The projects themselves...
I almost jumped right over the...
The projects themselves will be conducted in the order that you're talking about, Main Street first, into the Court Street area, and then the other areas, you know, after that. But, that's why we're funding in this order, is to maximize the principal forgiveness.
But, the priority of the work, we need this, we're having this now, and we've got you on tape. Okay, the priority of the work is going to be the priority that was always defined for the city.
Right. Okay, yeah, we're on the same page.
Okay.
And let me, if I may, you know, we're putting about 3,000 new apartments on Main Street, and they're going to be up and running, some of them are up and running already, but there's a lot, I mean, they're, some of them are three-quarters of the way done. They need these sewers done, all right? I can't think of anything worse happening than opening these new buildings, and the sewers fail because we didn't take care of what we were supposed to take care of first. And from day one, our plan was always get this Main Street separated and get that out of the way. That way, we can button up Main Street, finish the two-way, and let the redevelopment continue as it is, ready to go. And, you know, all of a sudden, we're in Clay Street, we're up here, we know about the hospital issue, but we really need to focus on Main Street, because that redevelopment push is our lifeblood. That's where all the revenue is going to come to pay for all this stuff. And if it fails, people aren't going to rent these apartments. So, it's, the redevelopment plan's going to fail. So, we need to get back on track, I think, and focus on Main Street. I really agree 100% with Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
So, the purpose of this presentation is not to prioritize the projects. I understand that that's what it appears to use, because that's the order that the ordinances were introduced to you. The deadline that Jim was mentioning, so I come on board representing your best interest in getting you money, and getting you money right away. At the time when we started the bond ordinance for the Court Street, I was telling Jim that if we want to get money and get into interim financing by October, we need to put a loan application in the docket before July 1st, because they update their project priority list on a quarterly basis. It doesn't mean that we can't go forward with, obviously, all of the priorities that you have in mind, but at that moment, my primary focus was to get you mechanism to reimburse yourselves for all the long-term control plan costs that you've spent to date. And at that moment, to Jim's point, Court Street was on the forefront of what was more readily to proceed, and that moment for a loan application, for a bond ordinance, and that's the only reason that was the first one introduced to you. These projects will run in the course that is the primary focus of the city. When the ordinance is introduced to you for Main Street at the next month, it will just be the mechanism for us to go into interim financing and start to pay all of the expenses that you've paid to date and all the assessments to date. So, my primary focus in speaking with Jim in July was to meet that deadline so that we have the bond ordinance in place, we have it adopted. Your bond council now, in synchrony, will go in and apply for the short-term financial addendum forms. You can have a loan closing by October 1st, and we can have money back in the city for all your long-term control plans by the end of October. So, that was the mechanism that we had at the time. However, we're not losing sight of your priority. We understand Main Street is a primary concern, and it is coming in the ordinance.
And just one other point, is that while we're doing the financing on this, you know, just understand that the design phase for the Main Street is still ongoing, okay? Later on, at the business portion, we'll be awarding a contract to Suburban Engineering for $350,000 for the design of the Main Street. So, that's going on already, all right? A lot of these things are happening simultaneously. So, while we're financing one, we're planning the other. When the planning is done, we'll start financing the third, constructing, and the projects are just going to be ongoing. As I said, this is going to be a long process, all right? But, as Alani mentioned during the presentation, the plan was always kind of treated similar to the way we handled the tax appeal problem. You chop it up into manageable pieces, and then manage the pieces, okay? But, you got to understand, financing is one part, and the project implementation is something else, okay? And the financing doesn't determine the priority of the projects as they be implemented, okay?
You have to understand, Jim, we're a little gun-shy, all right? We had a plan last June that was supposed to have all this work done by this August. No one here on this council was aware that that work wasn't being done. So, we're a little bit gun-shy right now of supporting another initiative ahead of one that we already feel was pulled without our knowledge. So, and I think I speak for most of the folks here, that's our biggest concern. That's definitely my biggest concern from speaking for myself. So, we do want some type of assurance that this project is going to receive the prioritization that it deserves and long overdue. So, there were plans and schedules put into place a year ago, June of 2018, to start this process, and they were just never followed through. So, we need to fast-track this, I believe, and get us back on track before, you know, not only are new buildings opening, but new businesses are going to be opening. Main Street, just driving on Main Street, the street's a mess, it needs to be paved. Everything needs to be done, and should have been done, to afford everyone to enjoy these new facilities as they open up, and we're falling behind. So, we have to get back on track.
Yep, exactly. And that was the impetus for bringing suburban in, you know, to be more responsive and to kick-start this thing going, okay?
You guys got to realize, we, as a council, we're told by professionals what, you know, like Kathy said, the plan was in place, you know, we're going to, yada, 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 this is the time for this, the two-way conversion should be done by August of this year, streets open, sewers in, and that's what we tell people. So, all of a sudden, like, what happened with the two-way? What happened with the sewers? And we don't have answers. We're like, we don't know what happened. So, you know, we're, like Kathy said, we're a little shocked, because we thought that, you know, I know there were some transitions with transition times with some vendors and stuff like that, but in that transition time, I think the ball was dropped, and we didn't continue on the path we were taking. And that's what I think happened to us, so. But, we got to get back on track and really focus on that, because, you know, I don't know what to tell a developer who spends a couple hundred million dollars in town and, you know, goes to flush a toilet, and it doesn't work. You know, I don't have an answer for that, and I better have one, so.
We've made serious commitments both ways, and partnerships have been developed with a lot of the things that are happening in our downtown. And, you know, if anyone knows me, I'm not the one that's going to ever stand back on my word. So, this is something that has to happen, that's all. Can't force, can't say enough.
Plus, it affects development moving forward. If they, any developers watching this, they see we're not where we're supposed to be on the sewers.
I think we're confusing the issue here, okay? All right? We're still on target for Main Street, okay? It's being designed, okay? It'll be financed next month, okay? Everything is still in place. The reason that you're seeing this ordinance first is because if we had done the Main Street ordinance first...
Right.
We would have lost the $1 million in principal forgiveness for 2019, okay? All right, but we're still on target for the Main Street sewer separation.
But, on target for what? I tell you, we were on target for August of 2019. Now, we're on target for what? We don't even have a... We have to put pressure and get this thing done, in my opinion.
Again, again, you're talking two different issues. You're talking financing and project implementation, okay? And financing doesn't determine the project implementation, okay? What we're trying to do tonight is talk about financing, okay? And just because we're talking about financing doesn't mean that we're ignoring Main Street, okay? Nothing could be further from the truth, kind of takes away from all the work that we've been doing on the financing side, okay?
All right, let's...
Hope we get it done.
Let's get it done. We're eager to get it done, let's put it that way.
That's it. Thank you, Alani.
Anybody else have a question? Steph?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Steph.
Leo?
Leo, do you have any questions?
Questions?
You have any questions?
No, I am confident that maybe Suburban is going to do the job.
Let's get it done.
Get it done, and let's see.
All right, number two. You okay?
I know he's up there.
There he comes. The sewers really got you, Dave, huh?
Okay, number two is the 250 Johnson Sewer Connection Update. There's a recommendation from Steve Plumb, do you want to...
It's up to you. Basically, for some time, we've been providing sewer service to a restaurant in River Edge. It's currently rug of a restaurant, I think it was something else previously, because of the particular location of the restaurant on the border of Hackensack and River Edge, it has long been connected to the city sewer system. And pursuant to an inter-local agreement, the city was receiving revenue from River Edge to compensate the city for the use of its sewer system. This agreement expired. We took a second look at it. It was certainly well below what you would call fair-market value for it. So, we went to River Edge, and we said, look, we need to adjust this. You know, they've came up with a request that instead of going straight to, you know, the full price that we implemented over a couple of years, we felt it's a very low-dollar amount. I mean, we're talking about, you know, full implementation, it's like $1,400 a year, that it wasn't worth, you know, getting into a spat with River Edge over it, as long as we fix the problem, and going forward, it will be fixed going forward. So, that's what this agreement does. It's an inter-local agreement. It will allow us to continue to service the property. River Edge will be paying more than they have in the past, even starting in the first year, and every year it'll go up until it reaches what we believe the best estimate is. We can't actually get actual usage, we tried, from the BCUA, but because it's a private property, they won't give us that anymore. They did it one time, so this is the best estimate of what the price should be. So, we ask that you support it, and, again, just, you know, cross it off the list, given the fairly low dollars involved.
Good.
Okay, number three is the citizen leadership forums. The city has reviewed our citizen leadership forums and added some additional questions to make sure that we're doing our due diligence. And before all of our boards and volunteers, we added, have you ever been convicted of a crime, yes or no? If yes, please explain. We want to make sure that all the people that are providing services to the city are beyond reproach. We certainly appreciate volunteerism and people's service, but in this day and age, if you watch the news, you realize that the scrutiny that is now presented to municipalities to make sure that we're taking all efforts to make sure that we're appropriate, proper, and moving forward has to be conducted. That's why these forums... And that's why these forums were, and I'm asking for the mayor and council to approve this addition to the forum. Number four.
If I may, I think that's a great idea too, and I also think, you know, from the council's perspective, I think it's worthwhile, as this is, we're all different liaisons to different boards, that when we have folks that are coming in and are going to be added to boards, if perhaps we interview the new members. I, just so folks here know, I interviewed, there was someone that had presented a form, a request to be interviewed or to have a place on the zoning board, and I interviewed the person last night, last week perhaps, and they were a fine candidate and I was going to recommend to the rest of us that we consider the resume is good, but also the individual seems to be the type of person that we would be honored to have sitting on our board. So I think that that might be another step we might want to add to our process too, that, you know, if it's a direct board or whichever board, that if there's new folks that are coming on board, that we take a few minutes to meet that person and talk with them and make sure that it's the right fit for them in the city. So, thanks.
If there are no questions, next is access for all board members needed. Next month's agenda needed more members for access for all meetings. I guess the issue is access for all not showing up on time. So our custodian, Andy here, cleans the building and then leaves here, locks the building and goes, cleans another one. Well, if they don't show up, he doesn't hang out here all night long waiting for people to show up, so not showing up in a timely fashion seems to be a problem. Andy also waited for them. If they don't show, he moves on, and if they show up late, that puts him farther behind in his services than he has nightly to work as far as his product. Right now, we have five members, but the, but not a lack of attendance, but we have a lack of attendance. So the board owner requires five, so to have a quorum, they'd only need three, but if these people aren't showing and they're not putting the dududud, there's really nothing I can do about this except change the expansion of the board and add more members. And of course, there's a precondition for members to be on this board, which also puts another component in here, so it's not an easy fix or an easy fill. Something to consider.
Questions, anybody? I mean-
For some of these questions, you want to-
Have we reached out to every board member and say, "You need to be here on time and state the reasons why it's very important to be prompt?"
To be candid, I think the real issue is just basically this board. For the most part, I think the volunteers at whether Environment or Shade Tree, I think these people are timely, I think, but there just doesn't seem to be this, does it really matter? Do I need to be there so we could expand a board and make sure we have more members so we could still have a quorum? But if these five individuals don't show and aren't timely-
Why don't we send out a little note that if, you know, if you've been absent a certain amount of times, that you're, we're thinking of replacing you because this is important to have this board and we need to get people on the board that are going to be able to come and be on time.
Okay.
Let's do that.
Number five is the Carver Park Program for Summer of 2020. Joe Urban, who handles our splash pads, sent a memo offering handicap use of the splash park at Carver Park early. So we normally don't really start till 10-ish. This would allow special needs children to use this early, from 8:00 in the morning till 10:00 in the morning, and obviously they'd have, you know, caregivers with them, but it would provide a level of engagement for these children that are already challenged. Because obviously, when the full complement gets there, I don't want to say they get shoved out of the way, but I think it complicates things. So we're looking for you folks to at least consider this proposal. So far, I think it might be a great, the city is always trying to find ways to reach out to different groups and different communities to find a way to service them. And here's a chance of, we're not open at this period of time anyway, it would just allow for us to get started a little early and hopefully put a smile on some kid's face.
I like it.
Number six is the issue of considering or adopting a skate park. This was apparently addressed prior to my service, but there is the ability for the city, if considered and approved, to get insurance to establish a skate park. However, the requirements for that is a list of skateboard facility guidelines and coverage, so you can get insurance, and there is a minimum of eight, they're pretty stringent. There's something that we would have to consider and follow this to the T if we're going to get insurance, if we're even going to consider this. So obviously, this is something just to kick around in the future. In the planning stages, I'll make sure that all of the council members and mayors, deputy mayors, all get a copy of this, and then at some point, maybe we can have a future discussion about this. Number seven, resolution from the EDA for Opportunity Zone Grant. This is, let's see, 49-acre industrial district along both sides of Newman Street and 500 feet south of Essex Street. This industrial area is located within the census tract of 234.02, which was recently designated as a federal government as an opportunity zone. So basically, this could be redeveloped, there could be grant funding for this, and this could open up ability for, provides for the city to tool, with the tool to go out and attract investments in this area if executed properly. This development could occur within the master area, which would provide provincial, potential to attract 3,000 additional jobs based on the data provided by the original major consulting group. So this is a chance to redevelop in a section, hopefully create jobs and opportunities for 3,000 people and hopefully that those would be residents of the city of Hackensack.
I'm really big on this, and I know I've talked to Albert quite a bit about that area. And it ties into something we talked about before, it's an area in need of redevelopment, industrial redevelopment, but also the infrastructure as well. So it's another opportunity for us to combine redevelopment along with the repair of our infrastructure, along with huge funding from the federal government through the opportunity zone, through the OS program. So it's something we definitely need to get done.
Okay, I obviously thought you might be in favor, I will be in contact with Pete Planos from-
Great.
Millennium Strategies, and we will pursue this. The last thing I have is, I want to clear up some misconception about the food truck ordinance. I'm amazed that people either don't take the time to research these information or call up the city manager or staff here to find out the true answers of what's being provided. So let me just take a couple minutes and explain this first. Right now, the city has no ordinance that any permit of any food truck in the city doesn't exist, can't happen, shouldn't happen, not approved, not allowed. So what we were trying to do is to create the, open the door, the crack, to allow food trucks in the city, but apparently, somebody didn't read the fine print because they didn't look at this and find out fact or fiction. The current ordinance reads 90-dash "Mobile and Transit Food Establishments." All foods and beverages except hot coffee, cocoa, tea on a mobile or transient retail food establishment shall be prepared and prepackaged. If the food or beverage is prepackaged outside the limits of the City of Hackensack certification from the Health Department, as to its sanitary conditions, shall accompany the application for the license required by this article. That's the only thing that can be provided in the City of Hackensack. So unless this food is prepackaged and sealed up and somebody certifies that it's good, it can't be done. So food trucks, where they cook it on-site or sell it on-site, is not allowed. So this new ordinance, the new ordinance would be in favor of having food trucks within our community, that's the first thing. Second, this ordinance allows for private food trucks to operate and event six times per year on private property. I listened to some stories people tell me, "Oh, they're going to park them in the street, they're going to park them in front of my business, I own a bar, we're going to put a beer truck and sell it out of the back of the truck." All of this stuff is not true. So I don't know where this comes from, but they certainly could clarify this by picking up that phone and calling the city manager. Next, the city did research surrounding towns and the six events came from the city, from Paramus. Paramus started off with 12-foot truck events and they never got to the point, they never even used it, so they reduced it down to six. This seems to work very well for them. So the city didn't just arbitrarily just pick a number and throw a dart at the board and say, "Yeah, we're going to pick six because we think that might work." We've had a meeting, we've had a committee, we've gone through a process to make this happen. So, the six events is considered separate from the city events that we may participate in. Also, if there's a special event in the addition to the six events, the city manager can authorize permission. So I have the ability as a city manager that oversee for these fine people, that if there's a special event or something that we need to do, the city manager has the authority to do so. So the problem that we have now, we have no ordinance, so we have an issue with zoning, we have an issue with health, and we have an issue with fire. So we have no controls in place, but yet we have these. So, the goal for the city is to provide an ordinance that invites food trucks into our community in a positive way to a trial process for one year. This city will be considering amending the ordinance should issues arise for food truck vendors. The city does not want to flood these areas with food trucks because we want to support our other food establishments as well. So the people that are here that own established businesses, we're not trying to shove them out or certainly hurt their business. So I'm confused when people make statements or ask these questions that somehow we're trying to hurt local business, this is some issue against some private business, city is spending lots of money trying to find ways to redevelop the city and re-engineering and make Main Street positive. I'm confused. So the mayor will obviously decide to open up, if there's questions, I'd be glad to answer them, and let's see if we can put this to bed because I'm confused.
I'll speak a little bit about this first, and this is the dangers, this ended up being a social media storm that started a day ago, and this ordinance was introduced last month.
Yes, it was.
All right, so whoever knew this could have come forward or called the city manager's office or anybody, Board of Health or whoever, but decided to wait till yesterday to bombard and it had like, because they have quite a clientele, this business, and had 100 hits in no time. And, you know, I understand that part, but there has to be regulations. We had no ordinance for food trucks of this nature, so we have to put one in place. Now, we just can't say, "Yeah, food trucks can go wherever they want," because if I have a pizzeria, I certainly don't want a pizza truck from another guy parked outside my place selling pizza, because that's not fair to me as a taxpayer or a business in the City of Hackensack. So we had to be concerned about issues like that. There's state regulations on some of the businesses we're talking about, some of them are breweries, on what they can do with food. A brewery cannot sell food off its own property, it's not allowed. Breweries also are not restaurants. Breweries are allowed to have people order food and bring it in, all right? And in the past, on occasions, have had food trucks at the brewery site, all right? What we see happening is a little bit of circumvention, all right? And what we want to do is, there's an ordinance coming up tonight, and I'm going to ask the council that we pull this ordinance completely and invite all the parties involved into a room and hash this out like it should have been done in the first place, all right? We're not here to hurt any small businesses, we're not here to, incoming business, we're not here to hurt our existing businesses, that's for sure. We're trying to grow businesses. But again, social media and the lack of communication just blew this up, something where somebody didn't read the ordinance, and, you know, this is what happens. Now, this is going to turn into a bigger issue during the next meeting, obviously, because that's when they're probably going to show up, and that's, that's fine, people have the right to come here and voice their opinions. But we're going to pull the ordinance, we're going to ask that all the parties involved, food truck vendors, restaurants, and what happened with this too, by the way, is now restaurant owners got wind of this and they don't want food trucks. So now all of a sudden, all the restaurant owners are like, "Hey, I don't want food trucks in my town, they're going to hurt my business." So that one little thing, that one little Facebook thing, social media thing, turned into a nightmare, which now has created enemies between our restaurateurs and our eateries and food trucks, and that's the last thing we wanted. So this will have to be repaired, and the ordinance will be pulled, we won't vote on it, and we'll have to reintroduce it in a different form. So that's where we're at with that. So I need a motion to open the public.
Open.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Unopposed? Anybody from the public would like to speak, please come forward.
Just real quick, thank you, Mr. Mayor, you're going to pull the, that ordinance, and yes, there's, the committee should have included people that are involved, that have food trucks, that use food trucks, and the, we're not Paramus, okay? We're not Paramus. And the biggest issue is the two breweries, one three years old, the other one a year old. That is one of the things, limiting them to six a year, it's going to hurt them, it's really going to hurt them. And I don't know how the restaurants down on Main Street are going to be hurt by food trucks on the northern end of Hackensack on private property. They're not on the streets, they're not driving around like an ice cream truck, although that would be nice, but it's a whole, they're two different things. But yes, include the breweries. I mean, I was here when that ordinance was introduced and it didn't hit me because it didn't affect me.
Be honest with you, Regina, Mr. Tapasco, we weren't even thinking of breweries when we, when we did this ordinance.
And now, but that's who's getting hurt.
Because we're taking steps forward to have food truck events.
Yes.
And Mr. Mayor, I may point out, you know, breweries under the state regulations, not ours, under the new state regulations, are not allowed to have sort of a side deal with a food truck vendor in order to, you know, supply food in a restaurant style. So any brewery that would do that potentially could get themselves in trouble with the state, again, not us.
They comply with the law, with the way that, to do it. I mean, I'm sure they'll be here later, they can tell you how, they're not breaking the law in doing it. Yes, and, you know, breweries are an up-and-coming business, but it seems like New Jersey doesn't support new businesses because all the rules and regulations, they clamp down on them. But that was the six a year on private property, that is-
Well, it's like you said, we didn't arbitrarily pick that number, we did a little research, not even thinking of them.
Yeah, but we're not Paramus.
I understand that, and they don't even have a brewery.
Right.
The breweries are affected in a different way than other, the other events, and we understand that, that's why we want to get them in a room, all right? Because we weren't even thinking of the breweries when we did this. But, and they hadn't done, I think they, you know, I don't follow what they do over there, but I think after the state law came out, there was a law where they didn't do anything. But that said, and there's other issues too, and I'll bring an example up. If a food truck comes on a Saturday, okay, we have to send the Board of Health Office over there, and by contract, I think we have to pay them for three hours?
Correct.
Three hours of salary. It's a $25 fee.
Time of the year.
It's a $25 fee. We have to send a fire inspector over to make sure that ansol and everything and the thing is safe, all right? That is a much bigger number because that's an inspector, so you're probably looking at $300 to $400 in city cost to pull in like $80 in permanent cost. We're actually losing money just by doing the inspection.
But the business is doing money and they pay tax on it, so it's, you know-
Yeah, but that's a tough sell.
It's, and you have happy residents.
There's ways around this, though.
Okay.
The food truck isn't paying city taxes.
The brewery does more business by-
Let me just say something, what about the local businesses that deliver pizza, sandwiches? You're cutting them out by putting-
No, they're not cut out, you haven't been, no, you haven't been to the breweries.
I have.
No, we order, we order from Hackensack restaurants, we do. There's a huge business, Kenyobi does a fabulous business with Alimentary. There is huge business delivering or picking up and bringing to the brewery. Check it out sometime, it's huge. They're not hurting, and they're two different things. A sit-down restaurant down by the courthouse is much different than, you know, having food, it's a different clientele. It's a different clientele, and we have, we have to make both happy, I would think, because I don't-
Well, I think that that was the city's intent till this started, but that's for another day.
All right.
Thank you. Next, please, anybody from the public like to speak? Sarah?
Yes, once again, my name is-